Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Thank you. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Brian Mikowski representing Salvation Army.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear and Father Lord, we thank you for this time to come together and just fellowship. Father, I pray right now that you would just bless the conversation, bless it, and may it be productive and just beneficial for the city of Pocatello. And I pray for all the leadership in this room, that you would just bless them and just help them to continue to do what's good for this community. May you be with us this evening. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Before we move any further, though, I have to recognize we have a scout in the room. Want to stand up? Tell us who you are and what troop are you from?
My name is Hiram Call and I'm from Troop 395.
Troop 395, Hiram Call. It's good to meet you, Hiram. Thank you for being with us tonight. All right, we'll move to Agenda Item 3 is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Work Session Meeting of January 9, 2025; Special City Council Goal Setting Meeting of January 9, 2025; and Clarification and Regular City Council Meeting of January 16, 2025. B, Material Claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for a period of February 1 through 15, 2025. C, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kyle Peck to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee replacing Kaylee Kirkpatrick, who resigned. Kyle's term will begin February 21, 2025, and expire January 1, 2027. Human Relations Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Chimad Dimna Obana to serve as a member of the Human Relation Advisory Committee, replacing Mohammed Safar, whose term expired. Chimad Dimna's term will begin February 21, 2025, and will expire February 21, 2029. E, Pocatello Arts Council Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of William David Hens to continue serving as a member of the Pocatello Arts Commission. William's term will begin February 22, 2025, and expire February 22, 2020. I don't know what happened. Just a minute. 28. F, Council Decision Vacation of Right-of-Way for Bogie Lane. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a vacation and abandonment of the public's interest in right-of-way of a 2-foot-by-50-foot portion of Bogie Lane and distribute said vacation land to adjacent owner Dykman Realty LLC, subject to conditions. G, Council Decision Aspen Place Planned Unit Development Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision granting a request by Gate City Builders LLC for a planned unit development consisting of approximately 5.56 acres located at 2806 South Fifth Avenue, subject to conditions. The development shall consist of eight multifamily structures and one lot consisting of stormwater retention pond, recreation area, and parking area. H, Council Decision Partial Replat Amendment of Iron Eagle Estates Division III. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request from Dykman Construction, Incorporated, to amend the current recorded plat for Iron Eagle Estates Division III by removing and plating the north 2 feet of Lot 3, Block 1, and north 2 feet of Lots 2 through 7, Block 2, subject to conditions. I, Council Decision Final Plat Approval for Stan's Industrial Park. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the subdivision of approximately 4.93 acres of land into 10 1-lots, generally located in the 6100 block of South Fifth Avenue, subject to conditions. Council, I know that we have a question before. We have a motion. I would like our CFO to come up and explain to the public. We had an explanation of the pre-agenda meeting about the one expense. I think he needs to explain that so the public understands that. And then, as a reminder, whomever may make a motion, the Agenda Item A has been requested to be removed and reconsidered after this portion.
Mr. Mayor, does he go first or do you want to?
Let's go ahead and have him explain it first, and then we can go from there.
Gene Hill Finance Department, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just to start out with, so that you can do this, the amount of the check that we wrote was $907, excuse me, $97,000. We just wanted to break out, the principal was in total $79,000-ish, and the interest and the penalty was about $18,500. And so you'd asked a question about total of Bannock County, the principal amount was $266,400, interest was $62,000, for a total of $328.6. Okay? Just for clarification. And then, just on this, I'll try and simplify this, but basically, you know, the Idaho Power and Avista uniform case revolved around the legal challenge regarding property tax, and it was based on the Railroad Revitalization Reform Act in 1974. And basically, the ruling was, as a result of the ruling, Idaho Power and Avista were entitled to refunds of tax credits for overpayment made in 2020, '21, and '22. And then, we actually have the opportunity to recoup it as a separate request on our L2.
Okay, and this was a lawsuit that Idaho Power and Avista won. It was a statewide lawsuit. Every county is involved in this, and this is the portion, the city's portion of that taxes that were collected that were overpaid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Other than that? All right. Super.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda Items B through I, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 3.
Second. So we have a motion by Council President Lorick and a second by Council Member Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We have A to consider now. I would entertain a motion for A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move for approval of Agenda Item 3A, the Minutes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Mansfield and a second by Council Member Mangum. Aubriana, can you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Rick, for bringing that to our attention, too. He was not here, so he wasn't comfortable with voting on those. So, that will move to Agenda Item 4. We have no proclamations, so Agenda Item 5 is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. March 6, 5:30 p.m., Clarification Meeting. 6 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. March 13, 9 a.m. will be a city council work session. Other events: The 45th Annual Simplot Games will be held February 20 through '22, 2025, at Idaho State University's ICCU Dome. Applications for the 2025 Pocatello Promise of Tomorrow Mayoral Scholarship for Students Program are now being accepted through February 28. As a reminder, do please keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. We will move to Agenda Item 6, is a public hearing. Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 February Budget Amendments. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a proposed fiscal year 2025 budget amendments. You can find everything here. I declare the public hearing open. Gene?
Again, Gene Hill Finance Department, Council and Honorable Mayor. If I can, just, again, each year the city finds it necessary to amend the budget to account for unanticipated grants and other situations. Although the city may have been awarded a grant, the city must still authorize the new expenditure in the budget. The budget amendment process is similar to that of the normal budget. A public, publish a public notice two times and then have a public hearing. So, for this year, the total budget is 7.1 million, totally for the general fund, it's 1.9 million, of which $750,000 is, according to fire, you know, to buy a brush truck, get rid of their apparatus to cover, and then also some fixtures on the bathrooms in Station 2. And so, that's basically it. And most of this, again, is, you know, like for WPC, it's 3 point, basically 3.7 million to pay down, you know, to pay debt and to move it into their capital savings account. So if you have any questions, you'd asked about earlier about Fund 78. If you'd like, I can go over that, or do you want me to wait?
Yeah, go ahead and go over Fund 78 and what that, where we get that money for 78.
Okay. So, currently, before anything was taken out, the balance was 3.4 million. 1.4 million is uncommitted. The mayor's office had 31 million in it. Finance had 232 million.
So the mayor's office had 31,000?
31 million, no, 31,000, thank you. Sorry, been dealing with the wrong.
I was like, wow!
Yeah. Sorry about that. Finance, 232. You know, fires, the big one, 763,000. Police, 499. And then after, we move the money for fire and for the mayor's office out of funds, out of the non-restricted area, there'll be a balance of 2.3 million.
Okay.
Any more?
Any more questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess I'm curious where we're going with some of this money, such as, let me go down and find what I had a question about. It was the liability insurance department. What are we going to do with that $4,577 coming from Fund 2?
So there's two, in Fund 2, there's two different line items. One, we're just cleaning it out, so basically we're moving that $4.5,000 into the top line, the other line, so that it's just in one place, to make it simpler. That's basically.
Okay.
The 4,500.
4,500. Got the zeros wrong tonight.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rick.
The 19th item in the description, Fund 35 Ambulance Department, there's some money that's being transferred, but it doesn't say where that money is going.
So basically, that is going into Fund 35. It's coming out of their deployment, and so we're just trying to get it where it needs to go to be used for operations.
So Fund 35 is ambulance operations?
Yes.
So what are they going to do with it? I guess that's my question. I thought we had a fully funded budget when we started, now we're moving other money. What are we going to do with it?
We have the chief on his way up here right now, if that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cheatham and Council. So those two, number 19 and number 20, these were wildland deployments under the ambulance budget, and so these were expenses over and above what was approved in the FY25 budget by the county. And so we're receiving those funds that we, as revenue from IDL, to offset previous expenditures to keep the ambulance budget whole.
Okay. One more. Fund, item 23, Fund 74, WPC Construction, that's $1.6 million. It says capital projects. Where is that money going?
So Levi is on his way up here, if you want. Levi, speak to that.
Levi Adams, Superintendent WPC. We have the opportunity to spend some of the money from our capacity fees that we collected, so we're going to use that to pay our debt service fund, our debt service for the year. So instead of taking the money from our operating fund and transferring it into the debt service fund, we're going to take it and put it into Fund 74, which is our capital expenditures. So those will be used for future projects. We have, as you know, quite a bit of capital projects in waiting, so that's just money that we can save away, so we don't have to borrow for that money.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Council? Thank you, Levi. All right. Gene, you might just hang out right there for a second, and we'll see what we've got coming up. Have we had any correspondence in your office that the council has not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we had any correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we will look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. See none, Gene? I don't think there's any reason for you to rebut any of that. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, Council, we will move to Agenda Item 7 is Grant Application U.S. Forest Service Community Wildfire Defense Grant, CWDG.
Go ahead.
Council may wish to approve submittal of a grant application to the U.S. Forest Service for their Community Wildfire Defense Grant, CWDG Grant Application, and if awarded, authorize the acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including the requested a match waiver, subject to legal department review. The total project cost not to exceed $4,836,555. There is no city match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, I forgot you had to read it. I move that we approve the grant application to the U.S. Forest Service Community Wildfire Defense Grant, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 7, and authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including the requesting match waiver, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lorick and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Rick, did you have a question?
No, it's set. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 8, Notice of Funding Opportunity Surface Transportation Block Grant. Council may wish to approve a grant application for the Bannock Transportation Planning Organization, PTPO, Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG, for the Highline Road Complete Streets Project, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. Funding from the grant would provide necessary funding for the widening of Highline Road from McCormick Street to approximately 1,000 Highline Road. The total project cost is estimated to be $5,396,000 and requires a 7.34% local match to be funded from Fund 70.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move for approval of the grant application for the BTPO STBG for the Highline Complete Streets Project, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Professional Services Agreement Davy Resource Group. Council may wish to accept recommendations of staff and approve a special, or professional services agreement with Davy Resource Group in the amount of $175,000 to develop an urban forest plan and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. The project is funded by the U.S. Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 9, for the Davy Resource Group in the amount of $175,000, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Paulson and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Acknowledgement and Consent of Real Property Donated to the Pocatello Development Authority. Council may wish to approve a request by the Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, and execute and acknowledge, an acknowledgement and consent on a real property donation agreement outside the existing urban renewal area district by and between Monarch Building LLC and PDA for the property located at 244 West Center Street, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the request by the PDA to execute an acknowledgement and consent on the real property donation agreement outside of an existing urban renewal area district, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 10, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to give it to Rick.
That's fine.
Because I want to.
Mr. Mayor?
He's got a delay there.
Good with me.
Anyway, thank you very much. We have a motion by Council President Lorick, a second by Councilmember Cheatham. We did ask a question in the earlier meeting about why are we acknowledging the acceptance of this to the Pocatello Development Authority?
Okay, perfect. So Brent McLean, Planning and Developments Director. So, the state statute requires any property that's being transferred to or purchased by the urban renewal district, which in our case is Pocatello Development Authority, that's outside of a TIF district, be acknowledged by the city, the city council, that that transaction is happening. And so, the owners of the Monarch are gifting it to the Pocatello Development Authorities, and the Pocatello Development Authority intends to remove the building and redevelop the site with future partners at a future date. But the biggest thing is that they want to make it safe, and they want to make it safe for the community and for the downtown at this point. And this is just a step in finalizing that process so we can move forward with the closing of the property.
Okay, super. Thank you. Any other questions for Brent?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is there an estimate of what the demolition expense is going to be for this project?
It's a wide range, and so, I mean, it can be anywhere from $100,000 to a couple hundred thousand. We don't know exactly. We have some structural engineers looking at it right now. And the most important thing is that we remove the building in a way that is safe for the adjacent properties as well, and secure those buildings at the same time as making this site safe and developable again. And so, we will have a request for proposal sent out. The PDA will send out that request for proposal probably next month, and then we will begin that process of hiring a contractor and getting some estimates, and so we'll see what that actual number will be. But there's a lot of question marks right now, as we've been looking at this property.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up?
Absolutely.
What fund will the PDA pay from? I mean, their funding, are there non, what am I trying to say? Non-devoted, devoted funds that the PDA has to cover this expense, or are they taking out one of the existing districts?
So they do have some non-dedicated funds in their general fund that they will be using for this project. The intent for the PDA, though, is to, at some future point, have some mechanism in place to recoup at least a portion of those funds. But the primary goal of the PDA is to take blighted properties like this, that really provide no benefit for the community, they're just kind of a hole within our fabric, and take these properties and make them viable again. And there's no way a developer could buy this property and remove the structure and put something in there and make money off of it. And what we would like to see happen is this property become an active participant in the community, that it's back on the tax rolls, that will be a benefit for the city as a whole, but more importantly, the economic potential of the property to help drive downtown and have a new viable building in the downtown would be huge. And so that's kind of what we're looking at, and that's really the goal and the mission of urban renewal districts.
Mr. Mayor, one more?
Sure.
Yeah, I agree that something needs to be done. It should have probably been done a long time ago. I think they've had way too long to fool around with this building, but I didn't think PDA could expend money outside of an urban renewal district.
They can with these funds that are not allocated to an urban renewal district. They can purchase properties outside of an urban renewal district. They have things that they can do that are outside of the district, and the state statute does allow for that, and that's why we're going through this process now. It very clearly identifies it. As these activities are happening, the city council needs to be aware of that, and the city needs to be aware of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more question by Councilmember Nichols.
I have a comment.
Oh, a comment from Councilmember Nichols. Go ahead.
Okay. I think this is great. In my opinion, this is like a textbook-perfect example of what urban renewal districts, you know, can and should be doing. I mean, it's going to increase safety, remediate blight, promote economic development. So kudos to the PDA for stepping forward and making a viable project there.
That's great. Good deal. Thank you. Thank you, Brent. So we have a motion by Council President Lorick and a second by Councilmember Cheatham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 11A, An Ordnance. An ordinance amending sections of Title 17 zoning regulations of the Pocatello Municipal Code to remove redundancies, provide clarity, and improve the function of the title. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd move the ordinance Agenda Item 11A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending sections of Title 17 zoning regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, specifically amending Chapter 17.01, general provisions, 17.02, land use decisions, 17.03, zoning districts, 17.04, overlay areas, and 17.05, development standards. To remove redundancies, provide clarity, and improve the function of the title, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11B, An Ordnance Approving an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2025 Appropriations Ordinance, increasing the total fiscal year expenditures by $7,157,995 to account for additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city, and to use previously unappropriated cash balance for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I jumped.
Nope, that's all right.
You took a long pause. Go ahead.
How do you wish this to be? How do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 11B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the whole ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield, and Councilmember Mansfield, and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Jared, could, or let's see, Aubrianna, could you please call the roll? I guess we need to do that first.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Jared, could you now read the ordinance?
Sure, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number 3148, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025, providing for an increase in expenditures in the following funds: general fund, liability insurance fund, street fund, transit rural fund, transit urban fund, sanitation fund, water fund, ambulance fund, employee wellness fund, water pollution control, WPC, debt service fund, and water pollution control, WPC construction fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $7,157,995, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of ordinance number 3148 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.